Good evening and welcome everyone. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. It's located on the west wall. Number, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on June 15th, 2015 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of minutes of work session on June 22nd, 2015 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item F, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1 is approval of Beatrice Humane Society claims in the amount of $5,000. E2, approval of Gage County area growth engaged claim in the amount of $20,313.23. I think that's supposed to be. F3, approval of Main Street claims in the amount of $10. F4, approval of the balance of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $275,178.9. Item G, approval of the Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $40,303.61. Item H, approval of special designated license for Risky's Inc. doing business as Risky's Sports Bar for a human foosball tournament in the south side lot of 2317 North Sixth Street on July 18th, 2015 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. and on August 8th, 2015 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Item I, resolution number 5785 amending the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works flexible benefit plan. Item J, resolution number 5786 entering into a consulting services agreement with Mountain West Side of Lockton Companies LLC for health and welfare program assessments as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, resolution number 5787 amending the recreational trails program project agreement with the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission to extend the project end date to September 1st, 2016. Item L, resolution number 5788 entering into point of measurement agreement with the Nebraska Public Power District as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item M, resolution number 5789 appointing Rich Moon to the Beatrice Airport Authority. Item N, resolution number 5790 designating streets or portions of streets as snow emergency routes and snow advisory routes. Item O, resolution number 5791 closing the alley between Fifth Street and Sixth Street near Logan Street. Item P, resolution 5794 authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Margaret and Martha Thomas Foundation for the installation of new playground equipment at the Scott Street Ballfields to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And item Q, approval of contract with Building Crafts Inc. in the amount of $252,600 for the water pollution control raw pumps, number 4 and 5, OA Project number 015-0373 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Mr. Catlin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to abstain from item D and E.
Okay, sir. And Mr. Cook will abstain from item F1. It says E1 but it's actually supposed to be F1, I believe. Morgan from F2 and Claybaugh from F3. Is that correct? And Mr. Partey from item D.
Alrighty.
Gee, was I the only one here? Me and Joe?
Yeah, but you were probably loud and obnoxious.
Are there any other items that any council members want removed from the agenda? Mr. Partey?
End, please.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Alright, your vote please.
Motion.
I beg your pardon.
May I move that all the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item N be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Then moved by Catlin, seconded by Rich Kerr. Your vote please. That is passed 7-0.
May I move that item N, resolution number 5790, designating streets or portions of streets as snow emergency routes and snow advisory routes be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That we discussed the item N, which is the emergency snow routes. Your vote please. Or, I'm sorry, discussion?
My question is, now that we've incorporated our city to larger area on East Hoyt Street, past Hannibal Park, back to the backside of BSDC, I would like to have that put on to the emergency snow route. I know this last winter when we had some snowstorms, the city does not go that far with our sanding and preventing those major intersections back there. The ditches, especially on the city side, are 10 foot deep in some areas. I think it'd be worthwhile to add it to the list.
Where is this, Dwight?
Hoyt Street, east from 19.
Okay, sure.
On the backside there.
Sure.
And I know the reason you were given for Hoyt Street not being included was the fact that BSDC has one entrance that's served by both Lincoln Street and 33rd Street, which are both snow emergency routes. Hoyt Street's a secondary entrance and that's why it is not included as a snow emergency route.
There are lots of places probably do have two entryways to, that are both access to the snow routes. I think it's a very dangerous road. It really is a horrible thing and since now the city owns it further out, we should take care of it. The snow does not melt off of that. It just stays there for weeks and months at a time. So at some point I'd like to have that added on to the list, either more debate or something if we could.
We can take a look and study it.
And there's two entrance ways on that Hoyt Street, isn't there? Into BSDC now?
We don't need any further action on that. We'll go to item 3.
We need a motion. We need a vote on approval of item N.
Okay. You're right. And we've got a motion on the floor by Catlin, seconded by Partey. Your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the acquisition of real property described as follows. Part of Block 9, Weeby's City Gardens, an addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, described as follows. Commencing at the northeast corner of Block 9, thence running south 80 feet, thence running west 166 feet, thence running north to the north line of said Block 9, thence running southeasterly along the north line of Block 9 to the place of beginning and commonly known as 627 River Road.
This is a property that, if you recall, we talked about a couple of times, they experienced some flooding due to the floods that we had in both May and June of this year. The owners then approached the city, inquired about selling the property to the city. We've been able to reach an agreement that we brought to you later on this evening in a resolution of $14,000 to purchase the property. This property lies just north of Riverside Park. The plan is to demolish the house, the residence that's there, and leave it at green space.
Questions? Comments? Rich?
Seeing as we've got the park man here, how many acres of land do you have that the city owns that you have to mow and keep clean now?
255 acres.
Okay. With all these acquisitions that we're looking at, how many more acres are we going to add to that?
I believe the two you have tonight will add approximately a quarter acre.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Recommend that we close the public hearing?
May I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m.?
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m. Your vote please. That is passed 7-0. Next item is a public hearing on the acquisition of real property described as follows. The west 17 and a half feet of Lot 5 and all of Lot 6, Block 31, A.J. Crosby's addition, an addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, subject to a promissory interest, if any, in the west 2 and a half feet of Lot 6 and commonly known as 813 Grant Street.
This is a vacant lot that sits at what would be 813 Grant Street. The owners of this lot approached the city about donating it to the city in return for a dollar if we did the paperwork, if you will, the legal documents necessary for the transaction. We've agreed to do those and they've agreed to deed this property to the city in return for $1.
Dwight?
Do we have any future plans for some of these lots we're buying that even aren't in the flood plan?
This one would be a lot that you could reuse, you could redevelop, you could come back and put a house back on this lot. Certainly we'll look for some opportunities to do that.
If you wanted to market it or give it to Habitat for Humanity or something, but the idea is not to hold on to it forever and ever, just says?
No.
Or around?
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience? Okay, I'd recommend the public hearing be closed.
May I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:11 p.m.?
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:11. Your vote please, and that's approved 7-0. Next item is resolution number 5793, authorizing the purchase of real estate common referred to as 627 River Road, Beatrice, Nebraska, from Dwayne M. Evans and Patricia A. Evans.
May I move that resolution number 5793 be passed and adopted?
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook. Resolution number 5793 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion?
This is simply the resolution approved contract we discussed earlier for the purchase of the residence at 627 River Road for $14,000.
So we have no grant money helping us out with this flood buyout?
No, there is no grant funding helping us with this buyout.
Has the property ever been approached in the long past even for buying out or did qualify when we was doing it?
I couldn't tell you if it's ever been approached or not. I wasn't here back in the 90s when they did a lot of the buyouts. I don't know if it was approached at that time or not.
It seems like there's buying hardly anything over that far away from the river. I still don't know if we need to keep buying more property that's not adjacent to our own stuff. This is owned by a person that probably owns more than one property in town?
That'd be correct.
A lot of properties. I mean, so we're helping him out by taking it away? I think 14's a lot for it. I would go lower, but I guess I don't know just because we're giving cash out of the general fund to do this.
Okay. Anybody else? Anyone from the audience? Alright, gentlemen, your vote please. That is passed 6-1 with, that is now 5-2 with Kerr and Partey voting against. Resolution number 5793 has been approved. Next item is resolution number 5794, authorizing the purchase of real estate commonly referred to as 813 Grant Street, Beatrice, from S&amp;G Land Holdings LLC.
May I move that resolution number 5794 be passed and adopted?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bob. Sorry. Resolution number 5794 be passed and adopted. Thank you, gentlemen.
Again, this is just the contract that approves the real estate purchase of the vacant lot we talked about earlier for $1.
Stan?
Sir?
What would be involved? Dwight brought up a point that kind of piqued my interest. What would be involved if we had some of these little properties, given them to Habitat for Humanity and things? What would be the procedure?
It would simply just be drafting the necessary documents that we would have, a contract similar to this one, transferring it to Habitat for Humanity. It would be coming back to you, passing the appropriate ordinance, going through the proper amount of remontrance period that the...
Do you know if they're building a few or...
I don't believe so. I know that Habitat for Humanity has at least one lot that I'm aware of, that they are not building on at this time. I don't know if it's a lack of funding or if it's a lack of volunteers, I'm not entirely sure, but I do know they have empty lots available to them at this point.
So I suppose there's no sense in me griping about grant funding on this dollar then, right?
You can.
You can.
I'll turn it down this time then, I guess.
You gotta be consistent now, Mr. Partey.
I would, but there's probably no grants available.
Is there anyone from the audience? Yes ma'am, you want to come forward and state your name and address, please?
My name is Michelle Harms.
Okay.
And I've been with the Girl Scouts for eight years. And if there's property, we're looking for a place to have a, because the closest place for the girls to go get their awards and such is in Lincoln. And we have Tri-County and lots of surrounding towns, so I just thought maybe that could be an option also, for a Juliet boutique. I'm sure they pay a monthly fee to have that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, your vote please. That is passed 7-0. Resolution number 5794 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is resolution, is resolution number 5795, entering into a contract with Call Management Resources for after hour calls as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
May I move that resolution number 5795 be passed and adopted?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number 5795 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
With the recent merger of Beatrice Communications with Crete, Beatrice Communications didn't feel as if they could any longer take the calls for BPW after hours. Currently, if you call, the phone number for the Board of Public Works after hours, it rings that to Beatrice Communications, they answer the phone. Chief Lang, I believe, didn't want to offer those services to Crete and others, and so we've been looking for an alternative source to handle our calls after hours. And you can see, we looked at a couple of different options. We called CRT here locally. They're not staffed to handle that type of call service. He directed me to a few other ones. MPBD does offer this service. We did contact them. You can see that their little, their price structure was a little higher than Call Management Resources. We did have numerous phone calls with them. They're based out of Columbus, Ohio. It's a one-year agreement with them. We did ask, all of their calls will be answered in Columbus, Ohio. That's where our calls will go. We can have up this, well, once we're done, assuming we approve this tonight, we will contact them and they will set up basically a skew of how to handle all calls that come in. What questions to ask, that leads them, prompts them to know whether it's a street or electric or water and who then to contact. They'll have our call-out list. It'll be handled the exact same as if it's handled by Beatrice Communications, except it'll be handled out of state. At any point we decide that we want to handle the calls back internally, we have a storm, large outage, we want to handle those calls internally. We can go in, we can stop sending calls to them, we can handle them ourselves. Once the emergency's passed, we can send the calls back out to Call Management Resources. Page 103, you can see we did a comparison of costs between MPBD and Call Management Resources. From looking at past data, it would appear as we average about 200 calls a year. We feared each call's about two minutes long. Using that assumption, you can see that the estimated cost for MPBD was $10,800. The estimated cost for Call Management Resources was 11, or excuse me, was $1,100. So with that, we would recommend entering an agreement with Call Management Resources to handle our after hour calls. It is a one-year agreement as well.
$100 a month is what it amounts to.
Very inexpensive solution to our problem.
I agree.
I think part of the problem is that we didn't have this issue before we expanded, so we're losing part of what we were, we had before we grew.
No.
Not gonna make up enough money to cover the difference, are we?
Oh yeah. Yeah, that's not an issue.
Of hiring three extra bodies though, I mean, we're not gonna be gaining that back right away.
But there's other income sources.
Yeah.
Hiring the three extra bodies. Gonna get that from Crete.
We're putting on three more people and we're outsourcing part of our program. Is that what you're telling me?
The dispatch is hiring additional employees to handle the additional dispatch calls that they'll have, yes. But they'll also now be handling calls for Ymore, Gage County, Beatrice, and now in Crete as well. 911 calls are a little bit higher on the importance list than the BPW after hour calls, and so we want to make sure they're available to handle those calls rather than...
I see the chief of police is sauntering up here. He's gonna weigh in just a little bit.
Bruce, like chief of police, let me explain a little bit of what the issue happens. It's, when we have a power outage, electrical outage, the phones will literally jam with all the calls. And when those phones jam because someone's electricity is off, that means that someone's emergency can't get in. You only have so many phone lines in a facility. You only have so many people to answer those phones. And so while electricity being out's an inconvenience, it's not an emergency. And though the Thanksgiving dinner might not get cooked on time, and to them that's an emergency, I understand that, the reality of it is, if someone's having a heart attack or someone's in a bad car wreck or whatever the case may be, we don't want those phone lines to be jammed up with someone calling about a utility issue that can be handled off-site at a non-emergency center. When we did the issue, or when we did the contract with Crete, they also answered their utilities and we said that would not be part of the deal for them as well. As the regional concept expands and continues, that would be a standing prerequisite is that we would not take non-PSAP type calls like for utility companies.
So the City of Crete will then have to set up their own designated...
They didn't have.
Center.
Correct. They didn't have already done that. And in answer to the earlier questions, we are, the fees and associated costs of this expansion are covered completely in the contract with also some allowances for our building and headaches. So yeah, it's covered quite easily.
Rich?
Were we aware that this was gonna happen before we entered into that agreement with Crete?
I know that...
We've discussed it from the very, very beginning, yes.
Was that brought to the council? I don't remember ever hearing anything about this.
During the work sessions, we talked about the fact that we would no longer be doing utility phone answers.
Tell you what, gentlemen, for $100 a month, this is gonna increase our efficiencies and if we don't like it after a year, we can move on. Any other discussion? Phil?
Now that chief explained it, I'm comfortable with it. I was a lot like Rich when he first talked about it, I thought, wow, we can't handle 20 calls a month, but with the influx of when I lost my electricity.
If you have electrical outage, you'll have 20 calls a minute.
Yeah, so with that, that'd be a good deal.
It would be on a different line though, right?
Well, it'll line, yeah, what happens is they get a busy signal on there, then they call 911.
Just a moment. Wait, wait till the chief's finished, okay?
Then they'll call 911. And we're trying to get them completely away from doing that, stick with the utility lines.
Any other questions of the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Ma'am?
My name's Michelle Harms.
Thank you.
And would it be, would it cost too much to make another job open for a Beatrice local? To just have another job?
Well, this is, they're going to charge us $1,100 a year.
In Ohio?
Well, that's where the call center is, yes. It's no different than, our alarm system that we have is based out, it's outsourced also, the alarm system that we have at the bank. And, you know, for what they're charging us, we couldn't put on a position and make it economically feasible for us, similar to this. Any other discussion? Gentlemen, your vote please. And that is passed 5 to 2 with councilmen's Kerr and Catlin voting against. Resolution number 5795 has been passed and adopted. There are no ordinances. The next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Chief, have an introduction?
I do. Bruce Lang, chief of police, this is Chris Moore, our new 911 director. He is the man in charge of the Southeast Area 911 Center, Southeast Nebraska 911 Center. He comes to us with extensive experience in combined communication centers as well as the technology side of Motorola, radios, repeaters, consoles. In fact, how we came to meet, he was doing the part of the install team for the console that we were purchasing after the lightning strike. And so our paths crossed and we shared information and here we are today and we're very happy to have him. Started last Wednesday and we're looking forward to great things as we go forward.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
Welcome. How'd the first day go?
Pardon?
Wasn't the first day today?
No, it started last Wednesday. Today, we did flip the switch today and the center is 100% operational.
Good, very good.
Have you physically hired two other dispatchers?
We hired two other full-time dispatchers and we'll have two or three part-time dispatchers that'll help fill in as well. And those have been, well, one of them's been hired and we're getting ready to hire the second one here, so. Yep.
Does he have a family or?
You live in Beatrice?
Yes, I do. I live, yeah.
Thank you.
I live on Sugar, Sugar, 200 block Sugar. And I actually came out of the Omaha area. I grew up in a small town, Red Oak, Iowa, and started on the law enforcement side of things, got in the fire EMS side of things, and then decided to go into dispatching a little bit because it was, it was pretty nice that I didn't get too cold, too hot, and I could have my own, you know, I could get off at 11 o'clock and not have to get, you know, sent out on other calls. But I spent 23 and a half years up at Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office there, and during that time I went through the 911 Center as a dispatcher, supervisor, quality assurance and training, center manager, technology and operations and stuff. So I made the whole gamut and this is a perfect, this is a great opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity. We've got a great, great bunch of people working down there and can provide the best, you know, quality service we can to the citizens of Beatrice and also the county and the service area that we service.
Dwight and I are your city councilmen, so you don't have to listen to us these two.
Okay, great. And no, not for the record, but yes, I'm single, so.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion of the Shataqua Park Road. Tobias?
Yes, this is one that, and Mr. Pete thought he can come up and join us, he's not gonna be able to sit in the back much longer. This is one of those items that as a result of the flooding in May and June, as you can see in your pictures in the packet, suffered quite an extensive amount of damage. And when looking at how to go in and correct this problem, one recommendation is that we just simply remove this portion of the park road. As you can see on the map on page 110, you would still have the, what's currently a gravel stretch there on the west side of the park, that would still be open, but about where the trail comes across and crosses that road would be closed. And then we would look to close it all the way back to the little turnaround area there on the east side and remove that. And Mark can talk to you a little bit about what the actual damage is in the area, but as you can see the pictures are...
I talked with James Burrows, the engineer, city engineer. He's came up with a cost right around $33,000, $34,000 to repair the road, which would go back in, what we'd do is put in three inches of asphalt on top of the road that's already there existing and use that, and that would, would be the cost of, to do that.
Is there any base work that needs to be done?
Really, truly, actually, when James said we could tear it out and redo it completely, kind of like what they're gonna do on Center Street, because it's basically still bottom. But this would be kind of an easier fix, probably than going in and doing, repairing the whole road. Ideally, what you'd want to do is build, build up the road, build it up probably a couple of feet, and then just let the water run off basically. But this was, this was one option that we talked about and he kind of gave me a price on that today, so.
Rich?
This thing gets it every time done to Mark. It's just like, it's just like Memorial Drive. We can't hold a road there. We can't hold a road there, no matter what we try. Unless we honeycomb it, we can't hold it.
And we've had water sitting on that thing for probably 10, 12 years. We've never really addressed it, but it's gotten worse now with the last two floods.
But unless they honeycomb that thing, they can't, they can't hold a road there. I'd say let's just close it up.
And you were using that as an exit, or it's being used as an exit, so the turnaround area?
Would just be right there at that, down there at the sign right there.
Mm-hmm.
Leave that. But most of the campers go out Grable Street anyway, so Ninth Street would be the other exit, you know, they go off of that Ninth Street there.
Comments? Consensus is?
Get away with it. Do it. Do it. Can't hold it, so tear it up, plant it in grass.
Mow it. How many acres does that add?
Another 1,700 feet.
There will be no action taken by you since it's not an official street on our lane model report. It doesn't require it to be closed or anything like that. We'll just, you'll see the work being done, but we want to make sure that you are aware of it, and we're okay with that decision before we move forward.
Okay, good. The next city council meeting is going to be on July 20th. We are going to go into executive session, or that's what's on the agenda anyway, if the council so desires. Mr. Catlin?
Here I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:30 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate and contract negotiations.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Clayball, that we go into executive session at 7:30 for the protection of public interest. Your vote, please, and that is 7-0. All right.